Good morning. And welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting for November the 3rd. As you can tell, we are still celebrating the Cubs' big victory last night. Congratulations to... Yeah, let's give them a big cheer. We are proud to be partners with the Chicago Cubs. And we are... There's a lot of long-suffering Cubs fans that have been in Mesa, Arizona for a long time that are celebrating today. So congratulations to the Cubs organization. Like I say, we are proud to feel a part of that organization and to share a lot of time and energy during the month of March and really year-round in Mesa, Arizona with the Chicago Cubs. So congratulations to everyone who's been suffering for the last many decades and been long-suffering fans. We finally won one, so congratulations to everyone. So for those of you who may be fans of other great baseball teams, we appreciate your long-suffering with us now through the celebration stage. We'll see how humble the Cubs fans are in the long term. But thanks for letting us celebrate. The first item on our agenda today is... Well, first, I need to just acknowledge that Councilmember Finter is excused and not present. First item on the agenda for today is to review items on the agenda for our November 7th council meeting. I do know that there are... We do have some staff presentations on Agenda Items 5A and 5C. So we'll... I'm sorry, excuse me. 5A and 6C. So we'll get through those and then at the end of this, going through the agenda, we'll hear those presentations. So council, if you could look at the agenda and let us know if you have any questions. Items 3 are various liquor license applications. 4, various purchase contracts.
Just a note, kind of exciting, 3G is the new restaurant out at Gateway Airport. So we're excited to see that come.
Oh, that's great. That's been long-awaited. 3G Barrio Brewing Company, probably one of the top, most successful restaurants in Tucson. Microbrewery coming in a big way to the Gateway Airport campus. That's going to be a very popular, very successful restaurant. Okay. Items 5 are various resolutions. Like I say, we'll be hearing about 5A here in a moment. 6 is the introduction of ordinances. And again, we will get a presentation on 6C, the Sycamore Station zoning case. And Item 7 are public comment and a public hearing on ordinances that were previously We do have a public hearing on the Town Center Improvement District scheduled for Monday. See if people want to show up and give us some thoughts on that. Council, any questions regarding anything on the agenda? If not, Mr. Brady, why don't we go ahead and proceed to the presentation on Item 5A?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And we'll invite Mr. Jeb Geniak to come forward for that presentation.
Morning, council. Great to be here in the morning after. Couple months ago, we announced Dexcom is locating here in Mesa, down at the old Motorola site off of Dobson and Broadway intersection. This morning, what we're here to present to you is a development agreement that goes with that. David Arida is here as the Vice President of Operations for Dexcom. Lori Gary from the Economic Development Staff has really been leading the effort for our team, and she'll walk you through a very short presentation. But this is intended to get you familiar with Dexcom and a little bit about the development agreements. Pretty straightforward, focused on Mesa residents, jobs for Mesa residents. Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Jeb Geniak. Good morning, Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of the council. This morning, I will be reviewing information on Dexcom's new medical device manufacturing facility, which is currently under construction in Mesa. I will be reviewing a couple of items. First is the initial contact regarding the project and the subsequent location of the project. I will also be giving you an overview of Dexcom, and I will discuss the current project specifications because it has changed since we initially had contact with Dexcom. And I will also share with you the anticipated project timeline. And finally, I will review the proposed development agreement between the City of Mesa and Dexcom. Very good. Thank you. First and foremost, the background. The City of Mesa's Office of Economic Development was contacted in 2015, early 2015. We were contacted with a request stating there was a company, a biosciences company, who was looking for... to place a facility, which consisted of three components: manufacturing, office, as well as warehouse. The company's initial specifications consisted of an existing building that had a minimum of 75,000 square feet, also with sufficient parking for several hundred employees. Location was very important to Dexcom. Specifically, they wanted to be close to the highway, and they wanted to be close to Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. Safety and security were also an important component of this project, not only for their facility, but also for the employees who will be working at the facility. And building image was an important component as well. Also, I would like to acknowledge that we worked hand-in-hand with our partners, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, as well as Arizona Commerce Authority, which ultimately led to the successful location of Dexcom. The location, the building that Dexcom's... The building that met Dexcom's need is located at the northwest corner of Broadway and Dobson, and it's just a short distance away, as you can see, from Loop 101 and a mere 12 minutes from Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. It's new construction, and it was built as a shell building, just meaning that the interior of the facility was not yet finished. And it was built on speculation, also meaning that there was no tenant to occupy the building when it was completed. And some of you may recognize this property. This property was the former Motorola campus at one point in time. This particular building was constructed at the end of... or beginning to be constructed at the end of 2014, and it was finished in 2015. And again, this is the facility that Dexcom leased. A little bit about Dexcom. Dexcom is a publicly traded medical device manufacturing company with over 1,700 employees currently. It was founded in 1999 in San Diego, and it produces continuous glucose monitoring devices. They've recently entered into a collaboration with Google to develop what is called the next generation of continuous glucose monitoring devices. And as a point of perspective, diabetes currently affects over 25 million Americans, and that number is growing. So Dexcom's medical devices are designed to serve this growing need for disease management in the diabetic population. I would like to just turn to David.
Sure.
Obviously, he's the expert on Dexcom in the background. David, would you like to add?
Sure. Thank you, Lori.
Do the one.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I don't know how many people are familiar with Dexcom. We're a fairly small company. 1,700 people to us is still fairly small. But we are growing. We've seen 50% to 60% growth over the last five years, which really necessitated us to look for additional space and for business continuity purposes. My name is David Arida. I head up operations for Dexcom, so manufacturing falls under me. So this was a really big endeavor for us. But Dexcom manufactures continuous glucose monitoring devices. These are little sensors that you implant yourself. We have five-year-old children who know how to do this. And it essentially gives you a blood glucose reading every five minutes. If you ever have known someone with diabetes, you see them prick their finger constantly, either before or after meals, when they're dosing insulin. This enables you to know where your blood sugar is all the time. We've also just released our ability to send that data to your phone. So all of that data goes up to the cloud. You can share that data with up to five other individuals, so either caregivers, parents, children, spouses, what have you. So we have just absolutely wonderful stories where children at school start going hypo, which is hypoglycemic, very low blood sugar, and the nurses down the hallway can come in and give them some gummy bears. Type 1, people with type 1 diabetes really, you know, suffer a lot. They have to manage their condition very, very closely. This device enables alerts and alarms to be set up because it's very hard to test while you're sleeping. So these are usually kept at bedside and will wake you up or wake up a caregiver to make sure that you don't go into hypoglycemia while you're asleep. But this has been a fantastic experience for me. The stories that we get every day are really, truly life-changing. And we're very, very happy to be located here in Arizona. It's been an absolutely wonderful experience.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Lori.
I had mentioned earlier that the project has changed since our initial contact with the company. I'd like to share with you what the project looks like as it stands today. The lease, as I mentioned, the shell building at the Broadway 101 Commerce Park. It is approximately 149,000 square feet. However, when the facility is completed and all phases are completed, it will actually be 216,000 square feet. That is because they're constructing a mezzanine on the internal part of the building. The mezzanine serves two purposes. First, because of the high ceilings in the shell building, the ceiling height is 32 feet, they're able to construct a two-story office space. This allowed them to conserve the floor space for additional manufacturing when and if, and we hope it's an if, or we should... We hope it's a when, I should say.
It's a when.
When they desire to expand their facility. The other purpose of the mezzanine is because it is a medical device, they will also be building a clean room on the inside of the building. And the mezzanine will serve to hold the mechanicals, like air handling systems, for their clean room. When all phases are complete, they anticipate investing $90 million in capital, as well as hiring a minimum of 500 new jobs, and that would be net new jobs, not only to Arizona, but to Mesa as well. Their timeframe is a little bit longer than we typically see. Their tenant improvements are expected to be completed in the first half of 2017. When the tenant improvements are completed, the facility will go dormant for approximately six months. That's because they are a medical device manufacturing facility, and they need the U.S. Food and Drug Administration approval of their facility. So their facility will be dormant while the FDA looks at certifying the facility, and at the end of 2017, the facility will start production. The development agreement. First and foremost, I want to let you know the development agreement is crafted to encourage Dexcom to employ City of Mesa residents through what we are calling a Mesa Resident Job Creation Program. The agreement is structured as follows. Dexcom will pay all customary fees and charges related to the construction and tenant improvements on the property. As I mentioned, the shell building is constructed. They will be doing all the internal tenant improvements. They will pay all development impact fees. They will comply with all city codes and regulations. And they will be creating a minimum of 500 net new jobs at an average annual salary of $45,000, which includes the value of the health benefits, as well as other benefits that Dexcom will be paying their employees. And again, they will be investing a minimum of $90 million in capital, and that includes all phases of the project. The development agreement also has a portion relating to the city. The city will pay $750 per Mesa resident employed up to $225,000. That payment will only be made after Mesa resident is hired and employed as a full-time Dexcom employee for one full year. The estimated revenues from the project, the permit fees, as well as the construction sales tax, is just a little bit over $363,000 that are anticipated to be generated from this project. However, the direct revenue to the city from all phases of the project, and that is one time as well as ongoing direct revenue to the city, is expected to be over $1 million. I thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to discuss this with you. Mr. Jeb Geniak, as also Mr. Arida and myself are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lori. And welcome to Mesa, Mr. Arida. We are... I think we all know people with diabetes. We know what a horrible disease this is. We know that it's growing by leaps and bounds. So I think it'd be great for our city to feel like we're playing a role in addressing and fighting this horrible disease and helping your company. So this is very exciting. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I want to thank Dexcom and city staff and all the other partners who are working to make this a reality. This is... It's not very often in Arizona that we get manufacturing jobs. That's the nature of the economy. And what's particularly impressive about me is potential growth for your company. And I think not only here, but at least from what I'm hearing, there are certainly possibilities of further expansion, depending on how the market goes and how your partnership with Google and things like that. And so I'm hoping that with those expansion needs, that you would also consider expanding within the community here. I know this type of manufacturing facility has great opportunity for partnerships with places such as the Miracopa Community Colleges, East Valley Institute of Technology, hopefully in terms of working with them to provide the training and certification that your new employees may need or that your ongoing employees may need to... because of the rapid changes that are occurring in your field. So this is particularly meaningful for me because when I served on council previously, I represented this area when Motorola site closed. And really, with the completion of this project, it is pretty much close to being the build-out of that site. So I just wanted to thank you for your interest and partnership with the city.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments? Congratulations to our Economic Development Office. It's a great project, had a lot of moving pieces, and I think it'll be talked about throughout the valley and nationally. So thank you for making this happen. I know it took a lot of work. And please, Mr. Arida, we look forward to having you be a big part of our community. So thank you for coming to Mesa.
Great. Thank you. It's been fantastic.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, Item 2 is... Oh, I'm sorry. We do have another presentation on Agenda Item 6C. Is that right?
Yes.
John?
Mayor, council, Item 6C on your agenda is a rezoning at the northeast corner of Mesa Drive... Excuse me. Main Street and Dobson Road, the Sycamore Station. We're excited about this project, opportunity to take that park-and-ride and area around it and redevelop it with transit-oriented development for that light rail station. It's our first expansion, really using our Form-Based Code outside the downtown area and going through the Smart Growth Community Plan process. So we're going to take a moment with this zoning case to refresh the council on the Form-Based Code and its application and give you a little bit more background about this particular zoning case. It'll be on... It's on next Monday for introduction, then two weeks later for action. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner, who has been handling this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, and city council members. Again, the purpose of this briefing is to provide an update on the use of the Form-Based Code and how it may be implemented at the proposed Sycamore Station project, which is very interesting because we're less than half a mile north of the Dexcom location that you just reviewed. As council knows, there's been a lot of previous planning efforts related to light rail in terms of the West Main Subarea Plan and later the Central Main Subarea Plan in terms of planning for light rail, the station areas and the transit corridor, and in 2012, actually adopting a Form-Based Code as an alternative to the standard zoning ordinance and providing that mechanism in place. With the additional Central Main extension of light rail and later the Gilbert Road extension, there are redevelopment opportunities. They're opening up at the earlier station sites and opening up some of those sites for more development potential. So this presentation will quickly provide an overview of the components of the Form-Based Code and then some particularities about the Sycamore Station location. In terms of the difference between Form-Based Code and the typical zoning ordinance, the typical zoning ordinance is primarily focused on use, residential, commercial, industrial. This is how the city was developed since its first zoning ordinance 80 years ago. Form-based zoning looks more at the building form, building type, the street frontage, that character that's created on a block, and also civic spaces. It encourages activities that are close together, that can relate to each other, that changes can occur within a building without coming back for rezoning. And in doing so, for the owner, provides greater predictability and consistency in the future. Instead of the typical zoning districts for residential, industrial, commercial, the transect zones provide a transition mainly of density from the more rural districts, moving up to low-density residential areas, and then increasing in intensity more to the urban core as you start to relate to pedestrian-oriented areas and areas that are accessible by transit. Again, discussing some of the differences, the Form-Based Code considers the public realm in terms of the entire block, the composition of the buildings within the blocks, the street-yard area, the sidewalk, and the right-of-way. And so to implement these concepts through the zoning ordinance, there's several functional elements. There's building types. There's a menu of nine building types that can be selected from. These range from your single-unit homes to townhomes and mid-rise and larger buildings. There are a series of street frontage types in terms of how the building would interface with the street, whether it's a porch, a stoop, shop-front type experience, or an arcade. There are 13 different thoroughfare assemblies to provide a range of street types. These range from wider, busier boulevards to parkways and then narrower streets that serve neighborhoods with robust sidewalk systems, on-street parking. And the Form-Based Code even gets into more service, alley-type drives, and how those can serve a development. And then also looking at civic spaces, a range of options is provided in the code in terms of providing large regional or community parks, drilling down to neighborhood parks, pocket parks, playgrounds, and even informal spaces within a development, and how those can be designed to engage where people live and not provide any unsafe areas. The code, if anyone has trouble sleeping and you want to look at the zoning ordinance, the Form-Based Code portion is very visual. There's a lot of photos. There's tables. That's primarily how the standards are conveyed instead of pages and pages of text like the typical zoning ordinance. So within each transect zone, there is an explanation of the intended character of the area, the desired form of that transect district, really like along a block or series of blocks, then the particular use within a building, and then guidance on how to provide parking. Parking is de-emphasized in the Form-Based Code, but there are provisions for adequate parking under the transect Form-Based Code option. The particular site that city council will be introduced to on Monday's meeting is what's being called Sycamore Station. It's a 20-acre property that wraps around the existing Safeway Anchored Retail Center at the northwest... northeast corner of Main and Dobson Road. This site, as you know, previously had the Tri-City Pavilion Mall, and that mall has been superseded by other retail opportunities in the area. So it's reuse of that site. The current zoning, though, does feature the commercial zoning that was intended for the retail use. So the zoning would change from the current retail designation to the five transect zones requested by the developer. The preliminary plan establishes quite a few uses within the site. Primarily, it's multiple residential with a range of 490 to 685 units, but there are also less intense townhomes and smaller products. There's a proposed senior living product, as well as extended care and possible education use. And for the public benefit of City of Mesa is also a central parking facility within that development. The anticipated heights are primarily between 2- to 3-story, but there are some 5-story elements as well. In terms of the site, it is a unique site with some items that'll need to be addressed in a development agreement in terms of replacing the Valley Metro facilities for the public, bus transfers, parking, making sure that we can get people to the light rail station efficiently and conveniently, and also ensuring that there's safe and convenient access provided to Webster Recreation Center and Webster Elementary School, and how we can get traffic out to Dobson without interfering with Sycamore and the residential area around it. If you could go through the details of the plan, each parcel goes through in fairly high level of detail the functional elements of the Form-Based Code, again, talking about the things outlined in the Form-Based Code in terms of building forms, such as retail, is it shop-front at street level? Is it a live-work situation? The building type, is it a mid-rise? Is it a townhome? Is it a courtyard apartment? The street frontage in terms of a stoop interface, terrace, shop-front, as well as provisions for parking and civic space. Again, this is a little bit more detail on the proposed parking facility. This would be for the use and benefit of the public. Planning will be working closely with transit and real estate and other city offices in terms of preparing a development agreement. We'll also be working closely with Valley Metro, making sure that this thing is designed to meet the needs as a transit facility. We did receive comments from various members of the public about the distance of the parking facility from the station because it is not right out front. It is a little bit back into the site. But if you match this up to the existing situation, the parking is really the same distance from where the surface parking facility is now. It's approximately 600 feet from the parking to that ironwood walkway to the light rail station. The difference will be right now, people are walking in an open area through the vacant lots, and in the future, if this builds out as planned, they'd be on an engaged street front with shops at the ground level and buildings above street trees and that sort of thing. So it would be a different experience through that 600-foot distance. This slide is just a little bit of an overview of the development process. So we are at the first step now with the preliminary development plan that requires the rezoning to move forward. Then it would go through a final development plan process, subdivision process, zoning clearance, up to permitting and inspection. The one thing that is unique that council will get to see again is a development agreement for this property. And as you know, typically, we like to bring forward development agreements with the rezoning. In this case, we're comfortable with it continuing to be refined because the city does have a lease that controls over half of the property, and we also have an easement for the benefit of Webster Recreation Center over another part of the property. So their plan can really not proceed until this development agreement is put in place. So we'll be looking at facilities for Main Street, Valley Metro facilities, making sure that public parking facility is provided, that it's the right size, that it's safely located and convenient, parking and access for Webster Recreation Center, as well as the elementary school, and looking at project phasing. So that would come back to council for another look. Assuming that is worked out, then the developer could move on to final development plans and zoning clearance and the rest of the development process. That concludes my presentation, but please let us know if there's any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you very much. I know Mr. Kavanaugh has a question.
More a comment. Again, thank you for the excellent presentation and the work that all the city staff has done with the partners on this. I'm in a fairly unique position with regard to this project, having served on Valley Metro Rail Board for the last six years, very familiar with the site. I've actually voted on different proposals for this site over the past 20 years, from the closing of Tri-City Mall to working with Mr. Pugh and creating the Tri-City Pavilion Shopping Center there, then working on a light rail. And then probably most importantly is when my colleague, Mr. Rich, had set the table for this kind of development with his great work with the West Mesa CDC in terms of leading the community engagement and discussion. Because from his work in leading that community discussion, I think you... Because from his work in leading that community discussion, I think you really, the community itself really created the idea for this kind of use at this site, and it's very welcoming to see this occur at this point. The city does have a significant investment here. I was on council when we approved and opened the Webster Recreational Center, which is a key part of that neighborhood in terms of helping provide programming and meeting space for residents there. This is exactly the type of development that I think the community and us have envisioned all along. As you noted, we've worked on several different projects. I think since coming back in office in 2008, one of the first meetings I had was with developers on this site. And so it's a long process, but I think it's one where the issues have really come together in a very positive way. And I certainly understand because of the moving parts of multiple parties here, development agreement, they would be very helpful. But I want to compliment staff and applicant for their patience, and hopefully I've been somewhat patient, working on this site for the last eight years. So, thanks.
Thank you. I see we have some additional staff. Is there some additional presentation that you'd like to make?
Yeah, we did want to announce that the Mira Vista, the developer, is present. So if there's any feedback you would like from them, they are available.
Great. Thank you. Welcome very much. Mr. Richardson and then Mr. Luna.
I do have a question. I noticed on your, I was going kind of through your plan diagram, and yeah, I agree with Mr. Kavanaugh, this is the development we've been kind of holding out for, and we've held the line. There's been a lot of affordable proposals here, and I just want to confirm that the plan here is a market rate type project, correct?
Correct. Mayor, Councilman Richardson's market rate.
Yeah, so I notice in some of your nice drawings here that you have some unit ranges, you know, three to 400 units, you know, the difference between 300 units and 400 units is a lot, and the townhomes, same way. Townhomes look almost locked in, but the seniors, the same way. Is that, what's the thinking behind that, or is that just to be determined in the development agreement?
The point is to give us a little bit of flexibility to work through the market, to give us the opportunity. We wanted to have essentially a ceiling from which we wouldn't go over, but we feel like there is, through the design process, we will lock that in, and depending on how we move through that process, we will be able to, you know, not exceed what we're putting into the plan. But we think, once we get into it, once we figure out the parking and these other pieces of it and working with staff, that it will be within that, within that range.
Okay. Okay, no, that's great. I mean, it's similar to what we did at DMB, as I recall, we gave some unit ranges and some square foot floor plate ranges and stuff.
And Mayor, Councilman Richardson, just to add, so Lindsey Shube, Gamache and Burnham worked with the form-based code quite a bit up in Flagstaff. And as I think I've said to a couple of you, when you really implement this plan, it's different than what it looks on paper. And so I think, you know, Andrew and your staff need some flexibility, as do we, when you start to talk about the frontage type and the building type, then you get the architect to lay out the units. It's just too early to pinpoint exactly the number of units we're going to have. So between the market rate and the developer, the actual implementation of your code, we just need a little range to work through it.
Sure. And I like providing that kind of flexibility in market. I think it's smart. The one caution I want to say is as you start working those details out, you do have adjacency with neighborhoods that have been there for a long time, and that continued engagement is important. I think you guys have done a lot of work up to this point, and you've really convinced a lot of people who were very skeptical at the beginning, and I commend you for the efforts that you've made there. Don't let up. You're going to need to do this all the way through the development agreement process. But I'm thrilled to see this kind of project come into this spot. This is really what we had envisioned here when we did the West Main Plan 10 years ago and worked on various incendiary proposal ideas here. So thank you. This is exciting.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you for the presentation. It was well done. When do you anticipate, I wanted to know where the developer was, and so thank you for coming up and clarifying that. When do you anticipate that you'll start the project and get this going? What's it look like? Do you have a timeline in place?
We have our first follow-up meeting scheduled later today. So, you know, staff is ready to work with the developer on their timeline.
And I think speaking for my client, he's anxious to go. It's a good time with everything that's so exciting that's happening in that area, with H Mart, with Mecong, with, you know, the presentation we just heard, the manufacturing being brought to Mesa. It's a really exciting time, so we're ready to go. We're moving.
There's a couple of things I wanted to commend you on also. The school study was important, and I appreciated the time that you took to kind of work through some calculations about what the impact on the schools. Webster School, it's illustrated that their enrollment is tanking, and this could provide a shot in the arm for about 80 students, I think is about what I saw, or 58 to 80 is a range, again. But that kind of thoughtful approach, I hope that you'll share that around the development community because I think that's, it's really important for, as we develop more densely in the future, to have those kind of considerations. The other thing that I wasn't real clear on was the easement with Webster and the backside. There's a fence there currently. Is there anything that's changing as far as how the development interacts with Webster Recreation Center? Is that all kind of just remaining as is?
Well, the existing condition would remain in the short term. That is one of the items that we need to address in the development agreement. There is an easement in place that provides access to the recreation center, and we've met with Parks and Recreation staff. They obviously want to have access and make sure they have very convenient parking to the facility. And so we will be working with the development team through the development agreement to figure out exactly how that works. But the plans have shown that that connection and parking is provided.
Yeah, because, you know, we leave the fence and we don't have any really pedestrian connection to the development to what, you know, a great recreation center. So I'm glad you guys are thinking about that, not as kind of an isolated, here's the great wall of Webster here, and so thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
And this is way better than what we saw, I guess, what, two years ago for this site. And my only question is, on parcel A2, with the frontage on Main Street, should we take a greater approach at pushing more of the commercial and retail out to the front versus putting it back into parcel C? Just because, I mean, you've got a station right there, and it seems to me like it would be a perfect spot really for more of your commercial retail type.
Staff will be requiring that the ground floor be furnished out to provide commercial retail uses with the adequate ceiling height and shop depths. It is, as you indicate, some prime frontage there. We will need to consider with the development agreement, the TPSS facility and some of the maintenance operations for Valley Metro. The TPSS obviously can't move, and so we'll be having to consider how Valley Metro will bring in equipment and get it in and out, but we can make sure we preserve the rest of that frontage with the ground level, commercial retail, and then upper story, probably residential uses.
And I think one other thing, and I've been, I've been kind of rolling around in my head, is as development like this takes place along our light rail path, would it be possible to start looking at or encouraging locations for PD, like mini substations or something along the way, so that they would have a place where, you know, if they're riding the light rail, they have a place they can go in and, you know, a safe place, they can go in and do their paperwork, and, you know, is there some way that we could utilize a joint agreement or something in this situation as well?
If I can add to that, we are aware that one of the requests Valley Metro will be making this would be for an office for their security at this location. So that is another item, and the development agreement is providing a facility for Valley Metro security officers.
Now's a great time to ask that question and maybe coordinate with Mesa Police to see if there's an additional need for Mesa Police, particularly, I know we've talked about the addition of the bike patrol and...
Shared views.
Yeah. Great. Well, it's been fun for me to be updated on this project as it's gone along. You guys are not ordinary developers. We're privileged to have you come.
Thank you.
This was, this was a very complicated process between all the different types of property and the way you needed to interact with the different agreements that created the situation that you were trying to unravel. So I know this was very complicated and you were up to the task, so thank you for tackling it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've also appreciated the way you've met with the neighbors, and I know you've been very engaging, and I've heard from them that they have appreciated the way that you've worked with them. I think the neighborhood's primary concern coming to this was impact on Webster Elementary School. How do you create between 500 and 700 housing units? Well, number one, I don't think anyone anticipated having brand-new, to some extent owner-occupied housing around Webster Elementary School. That's just fabulous, but I think we thought that was another generation away. So this is, this is great news for this area and just for all of us who are looking forward to the beneficial effects of transit-oriented development. I mean, wow, this is, you're our poster child going forward, so thank you. But I got to tell you, bringing in hundreds of new units, 490 to 685 units, I'm scratching my head with the, when we think we're going to get 58 to 80 kids out of that, or students in Webster. It just doesn't, I suspect you're right, but I just don't know why that would be right. And I get that Webster's in declining enrollment, so, I mean, that, this is the cure, obviously, for declining enrollment, but help me understand how we get 50 kids out of this. It seems like it'd be many times that.
Mayor, that study and those numbers actually came from the school district itself.
Yeah.
So we engaged with them because that obviously was a concern of the neighbors, and they were very much engaged and justifiably concerned what could happen to Webster. And we reached out to the school district early on and then continued to work with them and basically gave them our plan and said, "You tell us." And they came back, and that was based on their metrics. Obviously, you know, part of these units that we have in here are senior housing, so you can lop off, you know, 150 or a little bit more out of that mix. So I think that's where it becomes a little deceptive when you look at the overall total of units that could be in there. A third of them or more would not have any children being generated from Legions based on the, based on the tenancy. So that's where we worked with them and then essentially had them come up with a study and didn't want to influence or have any hand in that. And that's, the numbers that came back, and that's what we shared with the staff and the neighbors. And frankly, it looks like, you know, Webster could use this shot in the arm, and hopefully it's more children, you know, hopefully that it provides that. But it looks like it could be ultimately a good thing for the school.
Well, I know you'll be good neighbors, but I'm hoping that maybe even if we can memorialize something in the agreement or representations can be made at the zoning hearings as to the long-term commitment, you know, not just during construction and sales, but for the next couple of decades, that Webster Elementary School's best friend is going to be, you know, the folks that are living in this neighborhood.
Frankly, Mayor, we think that with the senior housing, there could be an opportunity for volunteer, you know, and so you sort of get the best of both worlds with additional students and maybe some additional community engagement just by virtue of who is living next to the school. And so we're excited by that, and we think it could be good for everybody all the way around.
Great. Well, to the extent, now's, again, the great time to have the, ask the questions about housing, the police department. I think it's also a great time to think about going forward, how we can ensure that there's a strong relationship between the organizations that operate this housing and that elementary school. So I encourage you to continue. I know you've had those conversations. I encourage you to continue having them.
Definitely.
But thank you again. I think we're all, we appreciate the large amount of work that's gone into this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, no other presentations on anything related to Monday, correct? Okay. The next item on our agenda then is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended, council. Anything to share? Hearing none? Mr. Brady, help us with scheduling the meetings and general information.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a Community and Cultural Development Committee meeting following the study session today. There will be, our next study session and council meeting will be Monday, November 7th. We'll see you then.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
There's a, this weekend out at, I'm trying to pull it up as quickly as I can, out at Eastmark, there's a big dig for the Cancer Society where they bring out, I think, PD and FIRE, both are going to have equipment out at Eastmark as well as some of the construction equipment from, from some of the local businesses, allowing the kids and other folks to interact and play with the heavy equipment. So it should be fun for all.
You're right. I plan on being there. That is going to be interesting for people who are fans of big pieces of heavy equipment, caterpillars and the like. This is the time you get to come in and ride on them and have fun, so.
And we also have GAIN this Saturday.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Kavanaugh just mentioned that as well. So this Saturday is when a lot of neighborhoods in Mesa will be having block parties and particularly working on neighborhood watch programs, and so there'll be a lot of council members and police administrative folks out visiting neighborhoods, so please look for us this Saturday night. I know we have another Los Angeles food truck. That event does not need any publicity at all because thousands of people come without our help, but, yes, Mr. Luna will be there and I will be there as well. That's a great event out in Los Angeles on Friday night. Council, any other, anything else we need to discuss? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.